Make a motion that we amend the fiscal year 24.
Actually, no.
No, is this the presentation?
No, I'm glad you did that, but we have to have a hearing and then we will approve it in the regular meeting. So no, it's not, you're fine.
So it's just was the presentation. So now, since there is no comments from the audience, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make that motion.
All second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries, we are adjourned. Now, we can move right on to our regular board meeting. Mission Walton Community School District is to provide an education that encourages continual progress for the improvement of one's abilities, the expansion of one's interests and knowledge, and the growth of one's character. Call to order roll call, please, Joy.
Jim Barrett here.
Linda Duncan here.
Tom Fitzer, scholar.
Rob Metzger.
Ter Oyn.
Alright, thank you, Joy. Agenda approval. Any additions, changes, or corrections, Mr. Burnett?
I'd like to add letter E to resignations. And Joy, would you like to tell us what that is?
It's for resignation for Seth Cockman for boys' basketball.
Assistant high school?
Yes.
Boys' basketball.
I thought I saw that on.
Alright.
That's it.
Alright.
Maybe it was in Chrysler's. I thought I read it.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to approve with the added. All second.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Alright, third, number three, we will do the minutes approval, all three of them, the April 12th regular meeting, the April 26th special meeting, and the April 26th work session.
Make a motion to accept all three minutes, second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Alright, on to, we have public forum. Are we gonna go in order, or do we want to mix it up?
Yeah, if that's okay. We have Mr. O'Shaughnessy and some high school band students. And Mr. O'Shaughnessy has almost completed his first year.
Exactly.
He will, and he's done an unbelievable job, and so we appreciate that. I'm glad you came tonight to share a few things about the program.
Hi, there's no high school students with me, although Kelton is actually in high school. I had a couple of students I'd asked to come, but I think they ran into some work stuff. So nonetheless, I'm here to present. Hi, everyone. I don't want to take up too much of your time today. I just wanted to attend today's meeting to formally introduce myself to those of you that I have not met, as well as let you know about some of the things that we've accomplished this year and what my plans are moving forward next year. When I took this program over, I was stepping in as the third band director in three years, with the previous two years having greatly been affected by COVID. Our junior high program was at about 30 students and our high school program was at about 47 students. With the direction and encouragement of Mrs. O'Donnell, I understood that one of my biggest goals and challenges this year would be to act as a catalyst to allow for our program to grow in size. With this in mind, my plan was to recruit as many of the sixth graders, our future seventh graders, as possible, knowing that my ability to flip the numbers in the older classes would be somewhat limited as band can be a harder class to join further along in the curriculum. With the help of my music conservatory students in my skinny block class, I was able to attend at least six of the sixth grade rehearsals. Me and the students that I brought down to the elementary band room would sit in Mr. Miller's rehearsal and play alongside the students. I would always bring with me a different instrument to play so that I could sit by different students each time, and I would let my students know that we are objectively going down there to make friends and convince everyone why staying in band is cool and important. Those operations were very successful. Next year, our high school numbers will be relatively the same. This is something that I have little control over, as it's easier to get the kids out of a younger generation. However, our junior high numbers are going to skyrocket. We will have about 45 to 50 students in our high school band, and we will have roughly 45 seventh graders in band next year. Given a somewhat natural attrition that occurs between seventh and 12th grade, I predict that we will at least double, if not triple, the size of our high school band at this rate within the next four years. The second thing I want to highlight is our involvement with community events this year. Our high school pep band played and attended all the football games in their entirety, six of the girls and boys varsity basketball games, and one wrestling meet. Something that is really important to me is that band is a memorable and enjoyable experience for the students. We did something a little different this year by playing next to the student section at the football and basketball games. I received very positive feedback from our band students, student section, and sports patrons about the way pep band was approached this year. And in turn, I think it helps build a really positive enthusiastic culture in our band room. I plan to continue this approach next year and for following years. As our program continues to grow, our sound will also grow, allowing us to give our pep band more opportunities to play music that's going to continue to help enrich our sports environments. The third thing I want to highlight is how much our program's sound has developed over the course of this year. Between the direction of having three different band directors, COVID coming across the past two years, and everything in between, when I first came in for our summer band camp, I knew that we had a lot of work to do with our music literacy skills. And I also understood that coming to a two-way school where we have students that are involved in band and sports and many different extracurricular activities, which is something I really embrace, my students' time that they could spend with band would largely be limited to the amount of time I actually have with them in the classroom. So I approached all of my rehearsals this year with, we're gonna really spend time with warmups that I wrote, all the warmups that are gonna strengthen the fundamentals so that no matter what, as long as the kids are showing up to band, we're getting better and our sound is growing. My warmups emphasized things like tone, intonation, rhythm, range, and just overall listening to one another to strengthen our blend. At the IHSMA Large Group Festival this past Saturday, our band program took home a Division One rating, the first time we had done so in about five years. With music being subjective to interpretation, I don't want to ever overemphasize the meaning of a Division One rating, but I do think it speaks to the progress we have made with our sound this year, and hopefully reinforces to the students that the hard work this year has paid off. Looking forward to next year, I want to run back a lot of these same ideas by playing in the stands at the football games and basketball games the same way we did. I feel like it was really well-received by my students, and with more time to prepare for next year, given the summer, we can play a larger variety of music to make our pep band opportunities even more entertaining. I will be pushing my students to participate in the solo and ensemble contest, something that our band students have not been involved in for a handful of years now. But I do think that many of our students are ready to do well at this festival. And down the line, I would like to start considering starting a jazz program here. I don't have the details for when and how that can operate, and I would also want to have everyone's support when making that decision. But these are just ideas that I have as our numbers and sound continues to grow, to create more opportunities. And then finally, I wrote you all a letter. I'm not sure how many of you have had the opportunity to see that, but I cannot thank you enough for giving me the opportunity to work here. I have wanted nothing more for a while now to be a band director, and this whole year has been really a dream for me. I truly mean that. I'm really looking forward to working here again next year, and thank you for everything.
What, do you guys have any questions?
Yeah.
John O'Shea, he's really taken a toll.
I could say I get stuck in gyms a lot, whether I want to be or not. And it is very, very upbeat when the pep band's there. There's definitely a different environment when they're there or not there. So I greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you.
In the evenings.
Thank you.
And I also heard a lot of great compliments about the football pep band. Everyone enjoyed listening to them there, and I liked that you kept them all the way through the game. I think that was a big plus, you know, so, but no, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And I was at their competition Saturday. They were phenomenal. I wish everybody could have heard them. They were so good. You did a great job with them, John.
Thank you so much.
Great job, great job. It was so good.
I totally agree.
I could have sat there all day and listened to them.
As John and I know, I've had quite a few conversations about just the, some of the things that in music you don't always, you know, hear or notice, especially in a high school band, but the level of dynamics and how we really have infused that into all of the music. And even the difficulty, because especially with the one piece was very difficult written piece from a former music teacher here. So I was very excited the week before our concert, and I said, oh my gosh, like, and goosebumps, and I told him I heard all that. And that's his leadership, and the kids are buying in, and they're enjoying it. It's really fun classroom to visit.
I think my favorite thing about the whole experience of doing well at the competition, and I think that the students that are in the band room can attest to this, leading up to that the whole time, the messaging was, let's go out there and let's give it our best shot, and whatever we get, that doesn't really matter. This is an experience, and we've come a long way this year, and I'm already proud of you guys. And I'm not going to be any more proud of you after we walk off the stage than I am right now. So like, congratulations. And that was the truth. And that, like, it was never about getting a Division One rating. I don't know. Those things are nice, and they are endearing to the students and me, but I think overemphasizing those things can be take away from the experience for students to know that it was all about having fun, and we still did well. And they like, recognized the strides we've made with our music literacy skills and our playing abilities. It was just amazing. So I was really happy with how things went, yeah.
Well, thank you for bringing more energy.
Absolutely. Yes.
Alright, thanks for coming.
Yes.
Who do you want to introduce the kids?
Yes, I would love to.
Mrs. Miller, you were step up to.
Thank you so much. So we had two of our students, along with Mrs. Miller and Mr. Gephardt, got to go to New York City and visit the Hamilton musical. I'm just gonna, ugh, it's so exciting. And had the full experience of being in New York, and actually had a Q and A with the cast. And I'm gonna let them, again, tell how this all came to be and a little bit about their experience, what they loved, and really how this changed them as a learner instructor. So hand it over to you guys.
So I'll start with the curriculum that lended itself to the opportunity that these girls won the contest for is through the Gilroy Lerman Institute. So Mr. Gephardt, this is a free curriculum that he found online that uses the musical Hamilton. It's on Disney Plus to talk about the American Revolution. And the final project involved a submission. Do you guys want to talk about your poem?
Sure. Yeah, so we wrote a poem, which was kind of unique because we took Alexander Hamilton and Eliza Schuyler's relationship, and we made the poem be two letters between the two.
Cause he cheated on her, so we wanted to like, get in like the, she's not him, and he's sorry, but also not sorry. She was like, Mr. Gephardt was like, yep, I really like this, you, and then I'm gonna submit to other students to the.
Gilroy Lerman?
Yep, to that, and then, you know, we'll get the results back in like, February. And then Valentine's Day came, and Grace was like, oh my gosh, Kelton, like, come on, Gephardt wants to talk to us. I was like, alright. So he got to us around, and he goes, oh yeah, so you guys won the Hamilton competition. And we're like, what?
That's how he said it. Like, oh yeah, you guys won.
Yeah, no, but you guys. We were very excited.
Very excited.
So as part of winning, they obviously, the, so the Gilroy Lerman Institute financed the whole trip. So they could have brought a different chaperone, but those girls agree with Mr. Gephardt that I needed to go too. I appreciate it. So, you know, the institute paid for our flights, for our hotel. We stayed at Hotel Edison, which is where The Godfather was filmed. So that was kind of fun, right by Times Square. So we walked out of our hotel. The theater on one way through the hotel, the theater to Hamilton was on one side. And then if you turned and looked the other way, Times Square was right there.
Wow.
So we were right in the thick of things. Yeah. And we had free meals. We had a meal voucher for the meals that we weren't in the room for. They paid for our Ubers in and out of getting to the airport, so, yeah. So you want to talk about what we did each day? Okay.
Yes. So Tuesday, we, you know, we did all the traveling and flew into North Carolina. We went to, we flew into New York, and we checked in at our hotel. And they were like, okay, we're gonna come and get you in an hour. There's like a little banquet thing that we're gonna have supper at. And we ate at that, and then we were like, let's go to Times Square. So we did leave Times Square, and that was.
It was crazy.
Very crazy.
I think that we kind of, you know, if you haven't been to Times Square, especially at night, which is when we were there, you know, it's really busy. And, you know, there's more people in those two blocks than all of Wilton. So, but it was really fun to see it and be like, oh gosh, this is what this looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Wednesday?
Wednesday, we went to a museum, and we rode the subway to the museum, which was, it was interesting. It was fun.
We tried that from Gilroy Lerman, who like, led the group. Yeah. So all the winners went to the Gilroy Lerman facility to see their archives. So we were with other people. Gephardt and I didn't try the subway alone. He had a pro. Okay, sorry.
At the museum we went to, there was, I think she said over 80,000 primary resources from like, historians.
Yeah, I recall. Oh, yeah.
Also James Madison's hair.
Oh my god.
Little chunk of it. It wasn't bright or anything. It was like, nice and brown. It was very pretty.
But the historians that gave the presentation showed us, you know, we saw, like, there was this great, like, it's not you, it's me, breakup letter from Abraham Lincoln that we got to look at and like, actually see his signature, and like, they walked around the room. And like, we looked at love letters from Alexander Hamilton and Eliza.
Yep.
There was the hair.
There was also the one thing from the Revolutionary War, the two sides fighting. I can't think of the name.
It was the painting that Paul Revere did about the Boston Massacre in order to like, encourage American sympathy. And so we were looking at like, the hand-painted Paul Revere. I mean, it was wild, but like, the idea that there was like, a room that had three alarms, and it was like a vault that was went into to see these things.
Yeah. So then we seen all those, and they like, passed, they didn't pass them around, but they showed us, so we got enough time to look at everything. And then they let us look at everything on the table, and then we went inside the vault, and we seen, it was like a copy of.
A version of the Declaration of Independence. It wasn't the original, but copies that they made.
Yeah.
Early on.
Yeah. And then, so after we did that, then we took the subway back and we went to the theater. And then we, it was crazy, like, everyone was like, let's go, let's go, like, into the security. And we're like, okay, you know. So then we walked in, and it was like, you know, you walked in, and then you walked down this little aisle, and then you seen the theater, and it was just like.
Beautiful.
It was so breathtaking.
Yeah. I don't even know how, but they like, made the audience look like it was part of the show. Like, everything matched the set. It was beautiful. It was absolutely beautiful.
It was exactly what you would see on the TV. And all the actors, like, when the actor, like, when Aaron Burr first came on, it was crazy to see him, because it looked like he was just like a hologram. Like, you know, I've seen the movie so many times, it's like, is he really on that stage? So we watched that, and it was, the performance was great, too. The singers were really good, I thought.
I think we were all in shock when all the actors first came out. We were like, we're really seeing this. I, it was so.
And then we did the Q and A, and that was really cool, too, to, you know, hear their experience of everything, and, you know, hear, you know, the different questions that everybody asked. And the theater was like, packed full of high school students. Like, there were so many schools there. It was crazy.
And like, it was funny to see the cast in like, regular clothes. Like, they just came at us themselves, right? Okay, so like, on the subway, I wouldn't know that that was the girl who plays Eliza Hamilton, eight nights, you know, for eight times in a week. You know, they look so regular when not.
Just normal.
Wearing things.
Yeah, what else? Then we went to Little Italy in Chinatown, which we did ride the subway to that, which you would think at like, 5, 7 o'clock at night, the subway would be very busy.
It wasn't at all.
It wasn't that busy, no. It was, yeah. We even got to sit down. They squeeze up next to people. So, yeah. Little Italy and Chinatown were both very cool. We did eat at a restaurant in Little Italy, and the food was very good. I had pasta, I mean, obviously.
I think Little Italy was the best smelling part of the year.
Yeah, you could have cigarettes and marijuana everywhere.
Times Square is a different place. It smells much better in Little Italy.
You get like, bread and pizza and pasta. Chinatown was very cool, too. I really liked seeing like, the cultures there. And like, they had like, they had like, fresh fruit just sitting out there that you could buy. It looked great. And then we went into a little store that had little samurai swords that Mr. Gephardt just had to see. And then we did, we took the subway back, and then.
We went to Central Park before we walked.
Yes, 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 Central Park. They go to Central Park. We seen a little crazy raccoon.
Yep, yep. They're not afraid of people.
No.
Very much used to humans. We went to the hotel from Home Alone 2. Okay, so that was exciting. Gephardt and I like, knew what we were looking for.
And then we walked, we went to a little art, New York gift shop, because I mean.
You have to.
Yeah, you got to, you know. And then we headed back to our hotel, and we were like, wow, heartbeats. And then slept, and then woke up and headed out for, to come home.
Yeah.
Nice, yeah.
What a crazy ride over there.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, three days.
Yeah, it's crazy to think it was three days.
It was like, the longest short trip ever.
That's good.
What an experience. Did any of our Iowa kids get to go?
No. So the other groups were from, there was a group from Kentucky that.
There was.
They were interesting.
They were fun.
Friendly.
There were some people from Texas and Pennsylvania.
California.
Yep, a California group.
Chicago.
Yep. So, you know, we did first saw like, everybody all together. Because like, when we went to the museum portion, they separated us into two groups just for the sake of like, the conference room we were in. So, I mean, I guess there was like, 50 maybe people that were a part of this, but, yeah. I mean, it really was. It was an amazing experience.
Yes.
And, you know, these two got us there.
How long did it take you to write the poem? I mean, like, it was just like a month long?
It lasted like, three class periods, I think, and we worked on it a little outside of school. Cause I think we started it in September, October. Yeah, around there, like, I don't know, a week, I think.
Yeah.
Cause how we got picked was like, there were 10 people that like, the judges were like, yes, we like this. And then there were 10 people that just got the luck of the draw. And we were one of the ones that got, like, we just got lucky, and they just chose us at random, so.
That's true. That is so cool. Good job, man.
Thank you.
So would you recommend a trip to New York, or is it okay just to see it on TV?
Definitely go. I would say definitely go. Maybe, I definitely would not live there, but I would visit there.
Maybe outside of all the big cities.
Yeah.
Well, it always helps to have a guide.
Yes.
Somebody that's been there, knows the ropes, because.
Mrs. Miller.
I would love to go, but not by my.
Yeah.
Take me around.
I think I was there for the mom travel support.
Yeah, I like it.
Not bad. I'm like, I just went to New York for a break. If that's what I do, that's fine.
Did you ever feel uncomfortable anytime? You know, because obviously in a big city, and you're Midwestern girls being on the subway and being in Times Square at night. Was there ever any ti- I'm just curious.
And I hope that we were with Miller and Gephardt.
Yeah, because they've been there before, and she travels like, a lot. So I never really, I just kept my things to, like, right here. Put my purse right here, put my phone in my front pocket, and.
I mean, Gephardt is strict about like, you don't leave the hotel without us.
Well, that's kind of a.
And also like.
I'm just curious.
Back by like, 10 o'clock, so.
Yeah, I don't know. It probably got weird earlier, but. Yeah, no.
Not that we saw.
Yeah. Yep.
Alright.
Good.
Interesting.
Congratulations.
That's really cool. Glad you had the opportunity to experience it.
Yes, yes, that is very. Gracie, Kelton, and Mrs. Miller, thank you so much for sharing that today. We are so excited that you did that, but thank you.
Hey. Alright.
Good trip.
And our next group of actors.
You guys have to follow that, sorry.
Maintenance man, the police officer, and the tech guy. Walking to him.
We have to follow that. It's like, what are they?
We're the one ducks.
They're giving you stuff that they've done. We're just here to ask for money, so.
Oh.
There you go.
It's a lot more fun than ours.
Alright, well, God bless this group. They're working on safety grant information that came down from the state last fall. And I know we talked about it at our maintenance committee meeting, about our doors and blah. And they've been working to get bids and also talking to the door company on what we can. And there's a lot of hoops to jump through. Have you involved the government in getting these things? They've been diligently working on that.
We're gonna start with that one right there. This project's gonna be now Phase 1 and Phase 2, unfortunately. Justin learned last week from the company that's running for this for the state, we are required to have fire marshal approval before we can get money.
There's a couple of things that we have. Right now, we're working on, there's a website called SAM.gov, and they are the governing body through the federal government that distributes money through federal grants. We have, the school's registered, and was registered several years ago. Me and Stacy did it. Problem is, is we didn't realize that it has to be renewed. So how that makes any sense, I don't know, but right now, our site is inactive. Stacy no longer works here. So we have filed the paperwork to have our school assigned to Angela. And then I found out from the federal service desk that we are able to then, they have the opportunity that this won't become a problem later, because Angela will be able to, say, Joy and Maggie can have access to that, too. Literally, all it is is just a distribution for federal funds. We give banking information, and that's it. So we have that. Like Bo said, the gentleman, I contacted the gentleman from WHIP Partners, which is who the state has partnered with, and he gave me a list of things that we were, should and shouldn't do. So the bid that's in front of you tonight is going to be for the outside doors. Everything that we currently have locked, plus one new door, and then one, one or two.
There might be a couple.
I know, there might be a couple, but, but we're gonna split the two projects up. We're gonna do the internal doors as soon as we're approved.
Which, truthfully, isn't a huge setback to us, because part of the problem with the internal doors is, there's like, a lot of them, 84 to be exact, that need new lockdown locks. And availability was still six months out on them. So this wasn't actually gonna be anything more than a couple-part project, truthfully anyways, just because of the nature of parts. So.
Well, the other thing I was going to point out, from the funding perspective, this whole project's going to be upwards around $150,000, $170,000, correct? So the grants for $100,000, we decided as a maintenance committee to get all of our doors done while we're doing this.
And be on one system.
And be on one system, because it just makes sense to be symmetric. And that money is going to be available to us now, which is why we can approve that portion of bid. And we don't know when the federal government or the state, whoever's going to approve this and get the federal funds, would give us that money. And either way, it probably wouldn't have been done until, whenever, we don't even know when that'll happen. It'll be sometime in the next 12 months.
And I really, the gentleman that I talked to from WHIP, he had a lot of information. He was very, it was actually nice to talk to. So we submit, I will submit everything to him. Once we have, we have to have board policies, which Lana is helping with, get for me. I have to write up the rest of the grant proposal, which is not much. Basically, I have to tell them what we're doing, add a little fluff. Once I have all that info, I will send it to the gentleman from WHIP. He will look it all over, and then once we have the issue with SAM.gov taken care of, then I submit it to the state, Oland Security. They approve it, and we should be good to go. Now, when that distribution happens, I don't know if anybody actually looks at it. So once the state approves it versus when they release those federal funds, I don't know.
And the other good.
What was the hangup with the fire marshal then? I guess I don't.
They, we're changing outdoor hardware. They want to make sure it's still compliant, not getting cheap Chinese crap right, locking some kid in a room. We're going Schleg hardware. I actually just was looking it up at start of report meeting. It's actually the exact same grade of hardware we have on our doors now. So I think my write-up was gonna be, this is what we have, this is the current specs, this is what we're moving to. I think it's gonna be a real simple conversation, right? Especially spec for spec, they're the same style of lock, so, same grade.
The gentleman from WHIP basically stated that we had to have fire marshal approval, but he said for a lot of schools that are doing this, it's been. The gentleman from With basically said, stated that we had to have fire marshal approval, but he said for a lot of schools that are doing this, it's been a simple yes or no. It, it's not, they have to come on.
These locks are approved, these locks.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, what we're doing is fine. We're not changing ingress, we're not changing any of the, the doors themselves. We're just changing them from key to keyless, basically.
And Justin would just say, and I call this the good news, we're taking care of the outside doors, which is our, you know, our perimeter, which from a security standpoint, you want your outside doors to be the most secure of the two and we're also having issues with our outside doors.
Well, the.
Our hiring vendors sold out and never called us. When the new company never called us, found out from, uh, the HVAC projects, they were sold out actually. And we've called and we're needing stuff and they don't return our calls and now we know why, so. And actually, the current system we have now is end of life, according to the manufacturer. So, there probably is eBay parts for it at this point, which. You know, it's, uh, fourteen days, I'll do it.
Well, and the, the ones, the one vendor that I did find, this is a company that only resells through vendors. We can't just go out and buy it. That's why I posted eBay, right?
Yeah, cause I, I reached out to the company once, the next week, they put a message on their website, we do not support customers directly, contact the reseller.
The reseller that I did find for sure was out of Chicago. So, like I told Joe, when I talked to him, I was like, if we had to have service for some reason, we lost the panel, we couldn't replace it and they had to come out. I mean, we're talking, you know, that's a three hour trip charge, six hour trip charge.
Yep.
Just on top of whatever they charge us for it. So, it's easier to do the, all the outside door, everything that's current.
Well, cause part of, the big part of the project is everybody's gotta be reissued here. We've gotta change all the printers, all the time clocks, all the outside, reissue cars. So, no matter what, this was kind of a huge project and we were always kinda talking about doing the inside doors this school year, but maybe over Christmas break. So, we could stage it out. It's gonna be a fair amount of work.
Yeah, and on, on.
Especially moving locks around too, cause that's the other half of it, is trying to get one key district wide. So, let's say, I use the green screen door right there. We're not gonna put electronic lock on it. Doesn't make sense, right? But it would be nice in an emergency, I could pull out one key and get in there. So, like the lock over there is the right key, it could get moved to there and reused, is the other half of the plan, is trying to get even doors that we're not doing in that eighty-four up to the five inch key.
Makes sense.
The, the bids that are in front of you right now, um, just to let you know, we aren't doing any of the physical labor. I've, I've got some wires to run. Door contacts, but that's it. Uh, both companies that we have bids from, uh, both Tri-City and I hope I pronounce this right, Interconnects.
Interconnects.
Inter, it's not, there's no R there though.
They called us, they called Interconnects. So, the door contacts, door contacts real quick, um, Todd, what's Wilton PD do for us every night?
Check doors.
And what do they usually find?
Open doors.
The cool thing with, uh, the system we're looking at moving to, it should fire off an email to us, hey, this door's open, so we can react to it much quicker. Set a timeframe, let's use five minutes, cause I don't know right now. That door's been standing open five minutes, we'll all get an email, we can go react to it and then Wilton PD shouldn't be checking with night, cause we already know, right? Still be up. Just. There will certainly be a rock and he's not wrong. It's his favorite doorway, isn't it?
Oh, I get that sense.
Hey, rocks and doors has been a problem since schools were invented.
Yes, yes.
Yep, so just to let everybody kinda know what we're looking at, if besides for the bids that are in front of you tonight for, for the outside doors, we're probably looking at about another seventy-five thousand for all the internal doors. We're going to do most of the installation for those. They're, they're fairly easy. They're Bluetooth operated, there's gateways that we have to put down the hallway, so it's not a whole lot. Um, plus it sounds like with, both vendors have basically stated the hardware won't all come at once. They'll get ten door locks and they'll send them to us, or they'll be fifteen. And it still stems from the supply chain issues on the electronic side that we're still having. I mean, if you wanna know, I ordered cameras in June, the end of June last year, I still am waiting for one.
That's crazy.
And it was, I mean, I, it's, it's one of those things where we, we're just gonna have to wait, so. It works on our advantage though, because then, like when I come in on the weekends, I change them out. And for teachers, it's no brainer. They either come in one day and they unlock their, their, their key with a, or with their door with a key, or they can unlock their door now with a badge. So, there's no, there's no, uh.
No scrambling on a Monday morning.
Definitely, so.
Well, and every time someone uses this, there's a record of it too.
Yep.
So, if there's something that goes amiss in the school or is a problem, who was in the school? Everything is recorded. That, that's, that's nice to have.
Yeah, and that's the other big thing right now would be, um, one click emergency lockdown.
Yep.
You know?
Oh, yep.
Boom, everything's locked, restricted to probably the security team's cards that at that point.
Yep.
So.
Do you have any other questions for these guys? Anything on the bid as far as?
Is there any?
I'm sure you, are you.
I, yeah, my, of course, my, my recommendation is for Interconnects.
The lower.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both companies can equally do the job.
And actually, Interconnects, we checked references on them, cause we'd never heard of them before. Uh, a couple of schools, Justin and I both work with and, yeah, they had good things to say about them.
Good. Cause we know you're gonna have to deal with them. So, we, I like, I mean, I know it's a lower bid, but also we, I like to know that you're comfortable with them, cause you have to work with them.
Honestly, honestly, walking through that sales guy was kinda refreshing for a change.
Okay.
Cause we took him to some of our problem doors and he had some great solutions.
Good.
And then we took Tri-City to that same, so same doors. I love working with Tri-City and he's like, well, we have to replace the whole thing. So, I've been pretty impressed with Interconnects is trying to retrofit some of our hardware, so we can get rid of things like mag holds. Like central office door, if you've ever been buzzed in there, you know, it's kinda awkward. You, you hear left door, but then you hear other left door, you never had to say that. It's nice when you have an audible click or a buzz or something like that, cause you got an idea of what side of the door you're on, right?
Yes. Good.
No, well, I'm excited to see this done. We talked about security and I think this is gonna help with that.
That'll be great.
And we're gonna keep our building monitored better.
I guess, um, the other part of this project, thank you, sorry Todd, is, um, remapping the building. So, the day we walked in and did the locks, we're gonna provide, uh, new maps to Muscom. So, if there ever is an incident too, they'll be able to pinpoint. The state's helping with that, they're doing GPS on top of it. It's gonna be a very interesting safety summer. It's gonna be very safety focused.
Focus the interesting next couple of years.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of changes coming on this side and be interesting.
Oh, good.
Always is.
Yep.
All right, well, good work, guys. Andy, you wanna give any updates on the summer stuff?
So, as you're aware, we got a pretty large HVAC, uh, project coming to start. Uh, that is going to be on May thirtieth, would be the start date, the day after Memorial Day. Uh, as far as I know, everything is on track for that. I just talked to the architect, Mark Moyn. He stopped in the other day. We actually had some other things we were going over. I don't know if you want me to mention that at all.
Yeah, no, go for it.
So, uh, he stopped in to give us kind of some options.
Sure.
Uh, for a new wrestling room. And, uh, we kinda ran through what we were thinking. Um, and he's, he's gonna get back to us and see. He's coming to our next port meeting, I know you have a lot of skills as a group, but he'll be able to answer all your questions then. And, uh, even questions about the HVAC, once we get it started, uh, he'll be here, so we'll, uh, we'll be able to grill.
Good, good.
Um, this summer I have, uh, the high school parking lot is going to be repainted. Uh, those lines are getting really faded, uh, so we're gonna get that redone. Uh, Poe's, uh, parking striping, uh, coming to do that. The new science room downstairs, I'm running into some issues trying to get plumbing out. So, we don't have any drain lines in this room and I've been working with Crawford Company trying to find some sort of way that we can get this done, hopefully cheaper. Uh, they informed me that they cannot pump the, pump the water out, do the chemicals. So, uh, that was today that I heard back from them. Still looking to see what our other options is, which would probably be involving breaking out concrete floors and redoing the floors, which is gonna be pretty pricey. And I'll, as I get more information on that, I'll let you know.
This is because we heard another science teacher moving Gabe Born to the back of the old cafeteria where the ala car was, we have a room in there between the locker room that we put in and the counselor suite, where Todd's at and the counselors. That's where that new science room is gonna go. And there's no water to that and the science didn't utilize water and it's heated.
The nearest drain is a fair distance away.
Yeah, Justin and I were speaking about this and so this is like hot off the cuff, but the other area to look at would be on the east, I don't even know where Ben Goss's room is. If there's any drain that.
That's the closest one eighty-nine I found was clear air server and so.
Well, what I'm saying is. Dustin and I were just brainstorming this about an hour ago. Could possibly, what if you put the science room in there?
Move the rooms and then put.
Mr. Goss across the hallway.
Put your chain in.
Put a, put an air conditioner.
Saying, all you gotta do is put a humidifier in there, cause you get that humidity in there.
Yeah, cause I, me and Joe talked, there's a lot of moisture on that wall, so what do we put up?
But I'm saying, that, that could save a lot of time trying to bust through.
Be a science room, isn't it?
Yeah, I did.
So, I'm.
No, you gotta, you gotta pop it over and you gotta think outside the box.
So, while we were just brainstorming, I'm like, I can't go across the hall. Think outside the, the door.
So, anyway, anyway.
Okay.
Andy's looking into that, but we're just exploring all of our options to get that taken care of.
Already started tearing apart the room, uh, over spring break, uh, to get the classroom going. Uh, but that was the issue we're running into there. And, uh, I guess I'll see, or maybe we'll talk more about moving this, which.
Just check it out.
Uh.
Mr. Goss teaches a business ed classes and, you know, computers.
Uh, so I have some concrete repairs, uh, that I would like to see done, uh, specifically around our manhole that's back, uh, behind the wrestling room. It's getting real bad. Um, there might be an underlying issue with that. Our lines may be maybe have a hole in it and might be sucking out some dirt with it. Uh, once we open that up, then we should be able to see what's going on. I've talked to the city, they said they'll come in here and, uh, help us out with it, so they can get us down to the problem, if there is a problem, or if it's just the concrete collapsing. So, I wanna get that completed. I had down that we were wanting to replace the doors in the old high school commons and I think we were gonna reappropriate that to door E eight. We've been having some issues with it staying closed and some students haven't been able to open it, uh, forcefully. And I think our best way to use that money would be just to switch the doors and get that replaced and put a molyon in, so they aren't, aren't able to do it, aren't able to do it anymore. Uh, so normal summer maintenance, we're gonna have, uh, painting going on as well. Uh, wanted to do some, uh, replacing of lights, light fixtures, uh, going to LED and gonna have to talk to Mark Moyn again, but he seemed to think that the lights were going to be replaced as we did this here. So, that might even free up a little bit of money that I wasn't second. We can use that in a different place. Um, let's see.
Get a hold of him now? I know we talked about that.
Yes.
I was gonna ask.
Uh, today, actually.
Good.
I called him yesterday, he never called me back, uh, but he sent me an email today and we have a meeting on May seventeenth.
Perfect.
Uh, so he did mention that we were gonna get together with Triple B and just to go over the project one more time.
They're still honoring the price.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm, uh.
We've been told.
Yeah, I haven't heard any different, I guess. Let's hope.
Right, right.
Guys, if they get the checks, it's gonna match the bid.
Yeah. Yep.
Uh, one other project I have going on is installing a new washer and dryer in the elementary. Uh, it's, uh, some pump room, well, it's not old, the sump pump room. Uh, we've had some issues with not having enough washers and dryers around here. And, uh, I think we found a good place to put it, so we're gonna be doing that as well.
Excellent.
And, oh, yeah, exhaust fans, exhaust fans for our junior high and high school bathrooms. They, those have not been working for, it's, they're in rough shape. And I have some bids out on them right now. Um, I can't say that I really like the bids right now, so try to get somebody else to give us some other bids. They, they wouldn't break out the pricing for me, so I'm working on that.
Brad's up here too and he's gonna talk to him about our brains, you know, whatnot behind the school.
Yep.
It's gonna be part of that conversation.
Y'all have any questions for me?
I'm just gonna add one more thing. So, the door project that he had in the old commons, we're just gonna label those doors as emergency exit only. Those doors keep on failing and that whirlwind that happens in there with all the leaves, anybody uses those, gets stuck in the doors and I find those doors a lot, or a jar every day, multiple times a day. So, we're just gonna put emergency exit signs on there. Doors still work, the kids can still get out. We're just gonna try to stop using those doors, since we're putting that money into E eight, or not, uh, E eight. So, we're just gonna say it's our Band-Aid for right now, cause if you guys, I don't know if the wrestling room might end up there, so there, at all. There's no reason to leave those doors, leave that way.
Yeah.
Students park in the parking lot, they should leave to the south. You know, I don't know why, there's really no reason.
Well, we discussed it in our, in our maintenance committee, that I think there's what, four there now also?
There's three doors there and then there's two on the side by the rest of the room.
But we were talking like, do we, you know, could we even consolidate that down, like a double door, you know, something that, it doesn't need to be what it is.
Just from my experience with the gym project, cause when we did the towns and commons, they made us keep the eight doors for the amount of egress that could be coming out of there on the south side. So, I have a feeling the north side is a similar issue.
They may have counted that, is, yeah.
But certainly worth.
Yeah, pass Mark a moment, he'll know it.
I don't know, on the fire marshal.
If we ever find one again.
Oh, they'll find us.
Guess they do.
Most opportune time.
Yes.
Funny, we don't understand.
I don't know if you guys knew this, but fire marshals anymore, they carry a weapon with them.
Yes, they are, they are certified law enforcement.
They're, they're part of the DPS, yeah.
Yeah, so you wanna have a good relationship with a fire marshal.
Not upset them.
I mean, are we legitimately having an issue getting a hold of a fire marshal? Is that?
No, I'm just being a smart aleck.
Well.
Some, they show up or, they show up once every three years, but you just don't know when they're gonna show up.
So, then someone called state, yeah, state office instead of the Davenport state fire marshal office. A minor issue, right?
What's, what's, and I'll say this and it's okay, I'm gonna say public, but we've had several fire marshals during my tenure here and not one of them. One fire marshal could come through a building and see nothing, the next one could find twenty things wrong, and the next one, the next year might see other things wrong that the other two said were okay and.
Yes, they're not consistent.
When I first started in two thousand and five, Joy may remember this, and we just got into the auditorium, okay? It was fire marshal approved everything. I had a list of over fifty things that were incorrect, that they expected to be fixed within X number of months. And I contacted the fire marshal, we just were approved. How do we have enough fifty violations?
Did they waive it or?
Yeah.
But still, it's like.
I get it.
So, what I'm saying is there's so much ambiguity in different people's opinions on that. And of course, we wanna be safe, yes, and of course, you know, I, I, with that, but can we just have a fairly consistent standard on what your expectations are?
I still probably have some ties, uh, to the Department of Public Safety, so if, if necessary, I can probably make connection if.
If we have any.
And get maybe a friendly representative.
Well, good. Well, we haven't had any, everybody's been good.
No, they've all really been good.
It's not been.
It's just the point you made about the inconsistency. It's like one of the schools up there, you know, was brand new, fifteen years after, they made us change the swing of a door because it wasn't safe. You know?
Fifteen years prior.
Fifteen years, it was okay.
So, I'm just.
I get it.
That's a sidebar, I apologize.
It's okay, I understand.
Always chuckle a little bit.
It, it does.
When you talk about fire marshals' business. What are you gonna find? What are you gonna find?
Or not find.
Yeah, yeah, that's on the day. All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm gonna sneak up here real quick, we're gonna do a tech timeout here, I want to teach Joey one more thing.
Thank you, Beau.
Just one more thing that totally forgot to say this, that we were gonna redo the board floors here on the south side of the junior high section. Which the bid is coming up later in this little while. Uh, so it'd be Hetzer's room, a brand, Get Part, and then the media center office right here. Um, the two bids that came in, one was from H T F and one was from Diamond Finishing. Uh, Diamond Finishing is actually a local guy. It was actually recommended by a few people and came in lower. I say we, I would say we go, go with him, give him a shot and see how, see how good he does. My recommendation there.
Thank you. Very good, thank you, Andy, thank you.
Thank you.
First thing on my list and I probably.
Have a wonderful night.
Thanks, you too.
See you tomorrow.
Yes.
All right, thanks, all right, we're moving on.
Yeah, we do, School Board Appreciation Month, thank you for serving on the school board. And thank you to Terry Dinkman for making this delicious dessert.
Yummies.
And feel free to grab a second bowl on your way out. It's kind of been a tradition, Tommy, that Jeremy picked up the slack after Gary Mallor retired, that person usually has two or three bowls. Jeremy would take home like the ice cream with him.
Yeah, yeah, he was the ice cream man.
Everyone's left, Jeremy took with him. He loved ice cream.
Yes.
I, I can pick up a slack on.
Okay, well, this is kind of a tradition about Jeremy.
My thing.
So, but thank you.
I can make my own.
Okay, that's the best kind.
Yes.
But I hope you know how much I appreciate what you do and the hours and, and. The benefits of being on the school board are minimal, but hopefully you find a reward in making a difference in our, our school, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, business financial functions, Angela, please.
Say, I do not have much to say whatsoever, I have been in Ames up until four o'clock today, so.
Oh.
I'm just gonna, I'll admit, I, I'm not as prepared as what I normally am, but there's really not much to tell you. So on the taxation funds, um, everything increased and I'm just gonna point out in Fund Thirty Four. Uh, that we spent twenty-two hundred dollars this last month and there'll be still more coming out of that. We have a balance of two thousand forty-one dollars. Uh, we're putting, we put some cameras out in the greenhouse and, um, you know, the Townsend's are, are very supportive of that program. So we felt that that would be a perfect place to, to use this money. So, um, I mean thirtieth, that money will be, will be spent. And because it's tied with Fund Thirty Three, if I, I do have some money left over, it, it'll just get, uh, put in there.
Under there.
Yeah. Okay, so that's all I have on the taxation funds, um, the I S P instructional support. We've got a remaining balance of just over seventy-four thousand. Denise has shared with me how she's spending the rest of hers. Uh, Mr. Myers come to me, we've got some curriculum that will come out of other instructional and support programs. Um, so I think everything will work out just fine there. Okay? Um, your self-insurance fund upload, um, no changes there. As well as, um, latch key, if you go to latch key vendor report, which is upload number nine. Um, Ann did spend twenty-five hundred dollars this month, but she's, that does not include that, that summer toy rec. Um, so that'll, that'll show up next month.
This is boring, this was boring things, we want some exciting things to spend our money on.
This is typically about what she, you know.
Oh, that was gonna be my question, did, did she not hear us, like, go, do it.
I know, she spent twenty-five hundred dollars and more to come.
All right, that's, that's what we want to see.
Okay, uh, nutrition fund, nothing has changed there. Um, activity fund report, nothing's changed there. And then activities driving, that is just crazy. But it's field trip time.
Field trip tracks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Track and golf going everywhere and, yeah.
Yeah. So crazy, crazy.
And it'll stay that way till you don't baseball talk.
So otherwise, my, my report's pretty boring.
Not much.
Okay?
Boring, it's good.
All right.
Hey, I did want to point out, if you looked at the activities account though, athletics has ninety-six thousand dollars in it. So, you know, we talked about different times about our athletic accounts or whatnot. It's in a good spot.
Well, just interest rates are really, the interest that we're drawing on these accounts is really good right now, I mean, yeah.
That's why I hope you.
Well, we make a month, we probably, it was probably six months.
Previous.
That you have, yeah, that you make, yeah. So, yeah, so I'm kind of.
Talking to Joey about that, putting those in the programs that, you know, typically aren't revenue, revenue generating programs.
Yes.
Can use it.
All right, anything exciting in the business?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
No, that's okay, I, Angela, he's all right.
It's, it's, it's been a week, um, yeah.
Those were actually pretty tame this year.
Yeah.
I was done entering those like on.
Yeah, um, I, I guess what I will point out is that we, we've got our Geo Series Twenty Twenty Two. Uh, we had our paying agent fees, which we do every six months, and then we had the interest payment for that Geo bond come out, so. Yeah.
Make a motion?
A second.
Well, if ever please escape by saying hi.
Hi.
Pose, motion carries, and thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
All right, on to administrative reports, Mrs. Austin.
This is, um. Yeah, teacher appreciation week, we're in the midst of it, so appreciate everybody's. Donations to the cause, the mud balls wear hats.
Good work.
Um, Battle the Books, we, kids were divided into groups, read nineteen titles with their group and then they answered questions. And so as you see, the winners were the big brains in the book battlers. And again, the community really helped us out by doing these really cool things, so that was fun to do. Fifth and sixth graders, Leadership Day was wonderful.
That was very nice.
Yeah, thank you.
I have to admit, I've never seen a confetti cannon, damn it, confetti cannon, yeah. That might be my new favorite thing. Those were amazing, like that made the, that made the, the whole thing work.
And the kids loved it, they wanted to scoop them up and save it, you know, they were taking them with them, yeah.
I mean, it had the right, the right pop, like it, it, it worked really good.
And it worked to our favor that they didn't all go off at the same time.
And it kind of kept it going.
Accidental screw up that was wonderful.
It was okay.
Yeah, no, very good.
Yes. Thank you, and I did include our review report, um, in my, uh, attachments, actually, I think it might have been there twice. But, um, we use that, we will use that feedback and data along with the M R A survey data to set our goals for the next year. That's one of the wonderful things of the framework for Leader and Me is they, nothing is by accident, everything is put together with all this data. And again, I think that process really helps us be successful. I mean, our people are really good too, but that, that really helps. So we appreciate, of course, the Townsend's Foundation and the board for continual support of those, of that program. Music concerts have wrapped up, um, Steady had a hundred, uh, kids volunteer to take time out of their day to, um, practice for the leadership choir. Uh, again, the enthusiasm that she puts forth with these kids, because that was, that was a real time commitment on that part and they were really good too.
They were very good, I was surprised.
And it was funny because the, the few that like came and sat down near where I was sitting for the, you know, they, they, they were so nervous. So I mean, not only did they, they volunteer, but I mean, it's a good public speaking kind of segue to get up in front of a crowd.
The amount of practice they have had through Leader and Me, performing to audiences or speaking in front of people, again, that's leadership, right?
And I mean, obviously else's household works, but like, my kid's speaking their own tongue, like I don't even understand half the words they're saying because they're made up. And otherwise, it's like shorthand, every, so to actually get up and have to present something like real English, like I appreciated it.
Yeah, they do, they do a nice job. Um, band concert will be tomorrow night and then we start the instrumental testing of fourth graders to see what they want to feed into as fifth grade band students. Handbook, um, the changes are in that red document, really, there's nothing that is, uh, earth shattering. I drew a line through the old verbiage and in red is the new, I mean, we moved the lost and found, right? We got rid of the free breakfast, you know, that's. I'm telling you, there's nothing made.
Yep, you're kind of quiet.
Are you okay?
Okay.
The drills, we did add a link to Alice, because we do have parents ask about that and want to be in line with, you know, a lot of times you'll hear in the news that the kids. One of the difficult things of where we are today is kids know what to do because we practice at school. And so we've had several parents call and ask, what do we do, what do we, what do you do with kids? So we put that link in our handbook. Um, dress code, we just combined those because I don't know why, I thought that was smart to have a different one. K four, five, six, so we just combined those, that's easy. The rest of it is dates, visitors, uh, we will, we plan to have a new check-in system that they would have to bring in a license or a government issued I D. That runs that background checks instantly, uh, we don't have those yet, we've tried out several, but the boys tell me that that will be a reality next year. So along with changing of dates, that's, that's the only updates in handbook and the preschool handbook, the only changes we made were dates. So that's date.
We're looking at the Raptor system where you come in and just lets us know someone has a.
I think so, I.
You know, background on sex, on the sex offender registry list and that sort of thing.
No, I, I, no, but that's what she's talking about. And I, I think it's, it's a great idea, I mean.
But that's why, that's why.
The liability we would have if we let somebody in is.
Yep, so F Y X, but that's why that's.
Great idea.
All right, step up day, we're all, that's a big day for us, they get to meet their teacher, preschool graduations are a big day.
Oh, yeah.
Um, summer academy, we'll have six teachers and we're shooting pretty close to sixty for our kids.
Awesome.
And then that final day, I just included what we do with professional development and then my, one of my favorite things is all that list of field trips there on the bottom of the report. And our kids do get a lot of really cool experiences and we really miss that during the COVID piece. These kids weren't going anywhere and you know, it is kind of nice to take them out of their element a little bit and they, they always do a nice job, so we appreciate that. Second grade was to be determined at press time, now they're gonna go over to the library to watch Winn-Dixie, it's part of their curriculum and, um, do a library scavenger hunt. It'll be good, May eighteenth, everyone's going to the candy kitchen. Lynn does a really nice job with the kids in the museum and then gives them all ice cream, so that's a little fun trip that we appreciate. And also wasn't ready at, um, press time, but Debbie Maroff, you saw her resignation in there, we'll really miss her. I really appreciate all the positivity and energy she brought to that job. So that is really all I've got, any questions? Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
All right.
There is something I do want to add, a week from today, at approximately two fifteen to two thirty, will be the senior walk. Uh, it starts down here, they're all in their cap and gowns and they parade all the way through the elementary, up and down the forest and then back. So really, if you're free at that time, I'll send out an invite, but, um, last year was the first time I'd ever seen that. I've never been at a school that did that before and it was just amazing, it was the coolest thing, I, I mean, really amazing. And to watch our seniors, like, I don't know, I had a student that said today he was gonna have to be gone and I said, you'll miss the senior walk. And he got on the phone and called his mom immediately and wanted to change his appointment. So, this is very cool. Um, just want you to know that we have everybody registered, um, in the building, seven through twelve for classes next year. Um, we are still, we are still revising some with seventh graders just because they're new and they still, uh, don't, you know, they still have a lot of questions. So we've got about less than thirty left that we're, um, this weekly is meeting with them one on one. Um, we will still run schedules over the summer and go through them to make sure we're balanced and, um, you know, each classroom is, is renewed effectively. That's coming up.
Um, and before, was there like a computer issue or something? Because like, I know Avery and like a couple of her friends had like random classes pop in that they didn't sign up for that she was all freaking out, like, relax, go, go talk, go, go fix it.
It happens a lot with, with, just with the student information system, the first time like they get loaded up and then they have to go in and like, um, use some kind of algorithm to change up and, and print correctly. But, um, I, I feel like there was more this year than in the past, but, um.
I'm gonna take the J M C course this summer, so.
I got it.
Handle that, I don't do the uploads, but I want to know why they don't go wrong.
Yeah.
Or why they go like that sometimes, I've seen it happen quite a few times, so.
And again, I, I, I think, I mean, she rattled off like five, six people instantly that had.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm like, was that, like, I was a little surprised, like, I was like, I didn't think that would happen, like, you submit what you want, no, I didn't, it just like, take it.
Yeah, it doesn't always, and sometimes with the advisor, advisor program, uh, for seminar, it, it does a funky kickback on that and. I don't know, I thought it was always like if you had an apostrophe in your name, because that always messes it up, but it's.
I got it.
It was more than that this year, so, yeah, it just works each time.
Yeah, that's what we look into, I guess, if, if, yeah, I mean, just for the sake of all the people involved, it just, it's a lot of extra work to not have to. And of, of course, all the students, oh, I'm gonna take the wrong class, no, you don't, relax.
Exactly.
And that's why we do it in the spring, so we're ready.
Yeah.
Before they hit September, so, um, we have just one open position left at the high school, it's our Spanish position. We have interviewed, uh, for it and we do have a candidate that we like. Um, there are, uh, uh, we're working with the B O E E right now to get her licensed, so, um, it's kind of exciting. So if that is all going through, we should have everybody.
B O E E.
Pardon me.
What's the?
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
The licensure department.
And if it's who I think it is, it's native.
Correct.
Speaking that learned English, so I mean, I think for our kids, like, I think that's a great.
Exposure.
Yeah, absolutely, and maybe lackable diversity will, so it's, it's a positive.
Great fit, potentially someone that could stay.
Yeah.
And the, and the candidate.
This candidate has nine years of teaching experience, so they're not coming in fresh, like they've done a classroom, they know. Um, yeah, I think it's exciting.
I'm, I'm really thrilled.
I am too.
At high school or junior high and high school, we've also had some field trips. Um, we, Mr. Beckley took his physics class to tour the physics department at the University of Iowa on Monday. Um, kids loved it, they got to meet with students and the researchers and, um, heard that they couldn't do it too. I was really glad that that was the message, um, given to the kids, so that was, they, I've got some good feedback from kids on that. Um, and Mr. Beckley really enjoyed it again too. Uh, we have, uh, junior high kids touring John Deere, um, on Friday. And yeah, we're starting to pick up more for the junior high tour, uh, to tour. Um, we, we actually have a committee now that we sat down and we looked at next year and we're trying to build, um, career and techno, technical experiences and exposures. For every grade level, seven through twelve, we want to do something monthly, just something to keep, uh, building that. And we're talking about trying to build like a, a portfolio or a document for each child that's on their Chromebook. So they can keep track of careers they liked, things that they were interested in, when they toured something, how did they feel about it? And we want to just kind of keep that record for them so they can go back and just keep getting that in their mind, what does that require? What kind of schooling would you need, what kind of training? Um, and, so we have a committee together that's, uh, trying to get, again, because COVID, we've had to stop all of that during COVID. So now we're back trying to replant it and maybe do the job fair again that with the city that they used to promote, so we're, we're working with them on that, so. Um, junior high is going to the, um, Spring Valley Bible Camp on Monday morning and they are doing, um, team building and, um, some leadership activities with that. And that's Mr. Kroger and the student council, junior high student council. And that's Mr. Kroger and the student council, junior student council are spearheading that. And the tag kids are going to have a logic and create challenged as they take on an escape room. Then they have to come back and tell us all their plan and if they want to. Mr. Warren's junior high students that were supposed to come tonight, they did end up placing first and second in the state of Iowa. But when they got to the regional competition, they didn't make the top three, so they didn't move on. But I still think it's fantastic.
Yes.
Out of our first time we've ever done that. Really exciting. And then last year's FFA plant sales, first time in I don't know how many years.
I don't think ever.
Ever?
I don't think ever.
They tried it a couple of years ago, but not to this level. Yeah. Well, Mr. Russian was here. Can we join?
Maybe.
But it's one year. I mean, Denise, I remember I bought some.
We've lost a bunch of, we, we've had plant sales before. Maybe in the winter, like, remember the heavy throws on cornsettes?
In recent times. Cornsettes, that's been done for around Christmas for a long time. I'm talking, we're talking like greenhouse.
Out of the greenhouse, we grew.
Bill Hammers maybe a couple of times, but it was never.
Yeah, not to this level.
Nice job. Yeah.
2,100.
That's great.
Sales. Yeah. There's still a few left and they're, they sent an email out today if teachers want to come out and. So, so I think they'll be gone.
Good.
They've got some really nice ones out there. We also got a grant from the Department of Ed. We're, there, we can start a bee, a bee program, hives and harvesting honey.
Oh, that would be so cool.
So far, we got all the equipment if we want it. There's some training coming up for that for the advisors, which is all covered as well. But I responded and said, when you were interested in doing, in taking it, and I will let you know.
I will plant the egg farm any day again, but I am not going to be a beekeeper.
I would like to be a beekeeper.
I would like to learn how to do it. No, I think it's.
I like honey.
I like honey too. That's what I want, the end result.
I would just like to learn how to do it. I think it's exciting.
It is actually really cool.
Some to add and it'll be out by that farm, that area. But and then Sunday, the 21st, we will have commencement.
Yeah.
61 students receiving their diploma. Are you all planning on being there? Awesome. Tommy, are you?
And yes, I do believe so.
Hey, Linda and Teresa, I haven't heard back from them. So I'll get ahold of her and those. And, and I just wanted to add that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. It has been the PTO from the elementary brought down some bagels and and Joe had the, what do we call those? It's a Wilton Classic. I learned all about it.
Yes.
I never had one before in my life.
I think. Record at like 14. It was probably bred after.
But the, the food has been amazing. This morning, Mr. Meyer and I put a breakfast on for the, for the staff or our secondary staff. And it was not bad. I'll say we did okay. You know, like, I actually put. And then we have a couple more things.
We have food every week, every day.
Pretty much. But I just, again, I, Wilton is really blessed to have such a compassionate and caring staff. And their camaraderie, it's fun to get together with them. But the, you know, they're, they grow every year, but I think, I don't know how their hearts can grow any bigger. But somehow they surprise me and it just seems like, you know, you get to the end of the year when you're tired and the shift, and now it's all like, oh, maybe we didn't have enough time with some of these seniors, you know, like, you, you hear it. And I just think Wilton is really blessed. They have such a great staff and, and I'm blessed to be able to work with them. So I just want to thank all those teachers because they're the ones that are, they get the job done. They, they're in the trenches along with our support staff. I mean, this place runs well because of them. So.
Do you want the board members typically, we will meet in Sue's office. We used to meet here. That's because we had graduation announcement.
Oh, yeah.
You want to meet usually no later than 1:45. Put on a flower and then we'll walk down together. And Sue can give any file instructions about how things would look. It's pretty.
Yeah, it's pretty easy. We'll get you there. Don't have to do too much, I promise.
Just show up.
Just be there. We have a nice, like, really nice group of seniors and yeah, it would be, it would be a really nice ceremony.
It is great to have air conditioning in there.
Yes, it is. And the Townsend, so we can do the receiving line. And we're going to put something in the program about how that will be structured, a little bit more formal details. And then we can talk, you know, guide the audience, but how perfect in case of inclement weather. And then line up all the kids as needed and everybody can go through and take the pictures. It'll be nice.
When you guys graduated, you were in the, oh, three of you were in the gym, right?
Yep.
My first year of super, it was 85 and it was bad.
Just being on the board, it was hot. So year they did, we had bottles of water.
That was my first year.
Because it was so.
It was horrible, horrible, so horrible.
Yes, definitely. All right. Any questions for Sue? If not, we will move along.
All right, let's make it heart and soul.
Thank you. Oh, and obviously we will.
Yep, you can see there's different, you know, this time of year, coaching changes and moves and whatnot.
The football field, like.
Just some tile. Yeah, they're, they're getting checked out with Bush turf.
I know that he's had some issues with the field, I mean, like in general. So I just didn't know if it's all.
It's not, it's separate in the sense that all the tile lines, they're having some issues with that or a couple of spots. You can see there's dead spots. It's not in the middle of the field. Matter of fact, the spots I've seen are more on the northwest corner, up in that area and different things. So kind of interesting. When I was the AD in 01, Bruce Chip was hired and we put in tile lines on the different yard markers and whatnot and rechroming surfaces like that. One of the stories.
I can attest to tiles plug like regularly or break or whatever. So yeah, it's, it's a thing.
When I was the AD, actually, we did that in the spring. Okay. When I was the AD in the fall, we got a big rain and water used to pool in the southwest corner of the end zone. And one of the football Fridays, Dennis Vanstone, we're out there with Chop back sucking up water in the end zone and then taking it and dumping it off. Getting water off the field. So, oh, the memories. So yes, that's being looked at, huh? Let's see where we're at.
All right, so.
So let's rock and roll. Let's get to.
Agenda number one.
Yep, you can see the resignations there. And again, adding Seth Kaufman from assistant high school board of basketball. Now the job scripts and the junior high coach. I've brought really nothing to, other than that.
A second.
All those in favor, please in the camera saying aye. Those motion carries. All right. Next is policy.
Yeah, 506 and 507 series. I'll take any questions, but if there's anything that needed to be pulled out, you can see they're down in the consent agenda number three for first readings. Okay, the ones that are left in consent agenda number two are the ones that passed inspection, if you will, and crosswalking the Association of School Boards policy primer. But I'll certainly take any questions that you have.
Make a motion to accept.
All those in favor, please in the camera saying aye. Pose, passes, consent agenda three.
All right. Quite a few things that are consent agenda number three.
First reading, first reading.
First reading of a lot of different things. Let me get to my spot two. On that 506.1, let's see, E8. Basically, we're just updating, again, we utilize the IESB, School Board Association's policy primer. And we're just dialing ours in to make them more specific and lined up with theirs. And you can see the highlighted there of what is released. If an agency, let's say the Navy calls and says, we'd like to have these students at a certain grade level, ones that have indicated they're X, Y, or Z, or you know, students with a 3.5 or greater. These are the things legally we can release to agencies that call on those things, colleges, you know, armed services, et cetera. One thing we can't release, if Tim's having a sleepover for Tucker, we can't, Tim can't call and say, hey, I want the addresses and phone numbers of Alec Crawford and these other kids. He can't do that. Okay. But what you can release and reasons being is why. Okay. But we have had some parents that have called for that type of stuff and God bless them. It's innocent.
Maybe.
But if there's certain, if they, if it qualifies, it qualifies. So any questions on that? You can see that's the student director information, the authorization. If a parent wants to have their child, not that, that information not released, they can opt out. So that's, you know, you can definitely do that. Letter E is author. The authorization of the asthma or airway constricting medication self-administration consent form. We have kids that have asthma, as you are well aware of. And then letters G and H are the second readings of the student fundraising. That's what we talked about over the last couple of months. Letter H is our graduating seniors for this year. As Ms. O'Donnell said, there's 61 of them. I, J, and K, and L, and M are our agreements that we have with Durant. We share art education, FCCS. I still call it FCCLA.
I know, that's what I was going to say.
Face side of family consumer sciences, FCS. Kids go over there for those classes.
I still call it home ec.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I had back in the day. We host the business classes and the book ed, which is our ed programs. The elementary handbook and preschools presented tonight. We're waiting on the secondary one because there's some things changing coming legislatively. We want to make sure we have it placed before we have that done. So that's why you don't see the, the high school one on there. Are there any specific questions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries. All right. Individual consent.
Yes. So these will be done one at a time, but the epoxy flooring that we talked about in our maintenance committee and we've tried to, you know, section off different parts of the school each year to get more of the epoxy in place. And, and as Andy talked about, he's recommending diamond, D is diamond D.
Diamond finish.
Diamond, yeah. Diamond D is a tailgate company, I believe. Isn't that the diamond D stainless steel that goes on pickups, tailgates? That's where I.
Diamond something, but I can't.
I think that's why I got the Freudian slip. I think that's what it's called. Anyway, he recommends diamond finishing for that epoxy bid and I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the diamond finishing for the floors. I'll second.
I represent by saying aye.
Aye.
All those motion carries. All right. Second one is, oh.
District calendar as presented earlier.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended district calendar to add the day off permanently.
Or until.
So it's not, it's not a makeup snow day.
I got, I know. I made a spot, Alex.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those motion carries. All right. Insurance renewal.
Angela, do you want to talk about the insurance renewal for next year?
It has not changed. We just are given a three-year pricing on that. So.
Okay, so it's.
It's, and Justin and Bo double checked everything. It's usually Andy, Justin, Bo that go through it just to confirm everything. So we should be good.
I mean, it's like a physical.
Do you want to explain how it works? I mean, if we have.
Breakdown insurance. So anything that could go wrong, like electrically, like, for example, all the motors that put the basketball hoops up and down, you know, they've covered those. Or some of Andy's cleaning equipment, they've covered that. So it's, it's breakdown insurance.
Got it. Okay.
I was gonna say all our phone books.
Yeah, that's.
That's a big deal.
It's nice to use the screens.
Yeah, screen. I mean, all that stuff.
I'll make a motion to approve SU insurance renewal. A second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those motion carries. All right. Door bids.
All right. I'm going to pronounce it inter. Ente, I don't know, interconnects without a PR.
Interconnect.
At 66,79459 as presented by Justin and Bo.
I'll make a motion that we accept the interconnects.
There you go.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. All right. Audit service.
We've used Kate Chapman for the last 25 years.
Yep.
She does a great job.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. All right. Revision of the certified staff handbook's leave language.
Yes. If I'm not mistaken, what we talked about and what we're wanting to do is those, remember those extra days that Lana brought up, her interest space problem solving about that $10,000 pool?
Yes.
That's starting next year. We want to do it this year too. So there's not a leftover portion. So if we up at the $80 per day, that should go into the 10,000. So if it came to 9,500, in the past, it was distributed equally amongst all staff.
Everybody got 30 cents.
Exactly. And it was a lot of work. So basically it's just making that active now for the rest of this year, which would then change that.
I'll make a motion to approve the revision.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. All right.
All right. On the informational piece, what a busy crew to the building principals and Mr. Hetzler, as far as hiring coaches and teachers. You can see that nine people listed there. Maintenance wise, Andy was here tonight. As corny as it sounds, I'm always excited when school gets out to see the improvements that are made throughout the school over the summer. It's always neat to see what's done in that short amount of time. So it's really go time for the maintenance crew. Is there anything from the pool side of things?
No, we will not. We will have a meeting in June to pay the bills. We've not had any other.
Which I'm surprised, but.
I know.
They've not reached out at all.
We've not had any, any comment, nothing from them.
I'm Lacy Delong, who handles us now with White Pigeon.
Yep.
So yeah, insurance wise, we would really like to know what's, what's going to transpire there because we have our renewal coming up.
We're filling it in or making it in the gym.
Do you?
Where is the renewal?
I can't tell you. I've held my head. I just met with her Friday afternoon. So if you need that, I can get that information for you, Tim.
So.
Right. That's how it works. I know somebody who works.
I know. Am I though hearing and we need to maybe get together with someone, Tim?
Yeah, we're going to have to do something. When's the renewal due?
We're going to have to initiate something, aren't we? Because, well.
Is it July 1st?
July 1.
Especially after. That's our fiscal year.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we probably need to push the.
Well, yeah. And that's, I mean, I can reach out to. Because we've already sent. The city administrator.
About 28, you're going at that one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, technically, if everything fell through, that's our building 100% now. Until otherwise differentiated. Technically, the city could say, we pay the full insurance premium because right now we split it. Until this is resolved. So I mean, there's things to work through.
We need to have a discussion.
Well, I mean, if they went that route, then we're free to do what we wish.
Absolutely. I, I know. I'm just giving you the facts.
I'll play devil's advocate on that going, thank you. See ya.
Absolutely. But I'm just telling you where, where our standing is.
And I, I also don't disagree that if, if there's a demolition bill or, or something, then I would prefer to split it still versus us be on the hook for all of it, but.
Exactly. No, we've had a good working relationship since the 1970s. We just need to finish on positive. But anyway, that communication piece will keep us posted.
Initiate meeting with whoever, somebody.
We just need a final answer.
We need.
No, I know that there's a meeting. I was included on the invite. I don't know if I'll be able to attend or not, but the city's had a meeting with a Aqua company, if you will, that, did you get involved in that?
No, no. But we, yeah, but we knew they were going to do that, that.
That's next week.
So maybe they're.
Thursday. So they're looking at options on different things. So.
Isn't that fine?
We just need to make. Yeah, no, it's here and over there. That's just keeping that communication open. So people are on the same page. Legislatively, the session ended last week. As I said earlier, there's a lot of stuff for us to sort out and there's different legislation passes and the Department of Ed deciphers and the Department of Ed issues out what we have to do. So you may read something, the Boyne Register School has to do this, but until the Department of Ed issues, that's what this means and this is what you will do.
Till they give their guidance.
Exactly. So we have to wait on. Exactly. So we have to wait on that before we can enact.
Here's how we interpret and as we're going to enforce it.
Exactly.
Here's what you're relying.
And it's pointless for us to do anything ahead of that because I've seen it go a lot in different directions. Our next work session is scheduled for May twenty fourth. If you don't mind, let's see where we're at. That's the last week of school. It's right after graduation. Sometimes that month, we've got together briefly or we just haven't gotten together because of end of the school year type stuff. But it's on the calendar. Otherwise, our next board meeting is on June fourteenth. As I mentioned earlier, old PM, Mark Moyn, not old PM. MGA, Martin Gardner Architects, Mrs. Mark Moyn will be attending to talk about options as Andy and I talked about, the potential wrestling room and giving an update on the each day.
I will try to bring treats.
Is it your birthday?
Yes.
All right. So.
I can't believe you're gonna be thirty.
Thank you.
I can't either. Last year, twenty eight. All right.
And it's not a special one yet. So I'm I'm still under. I'm still under. I'm still under. I'm not quite there.
You don't get pre-insured yet?
No, I do not get pre-insured for it yet.
Tommy, Rob didn't eat his, so that's yours.
Oh, I don't know that chain.
If you could eat fourteen mud balls.
How lovely are they?
Oh, come on.
And I had to trade away half my lunch to get them.
All right. We need a motion to adjourn.
All right. What's adjourned?
I think I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those who carries. Thank you, everyone.
Joy, get that turned off up there.
Please.